To call this Board of Equalization, uh, the Board of Equalization meeting for today, Monday, March thirteenth to order. Notice according to the Open Meetings Act was properly posted for this, this meeting on Thursday, March the third. This is a three-member board. At this moment, two of us are present, Mr. Town and myself, Eleanor Thompson. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And the first order of business is gonna be approval of minutes of the prior meeting, February twenty eighth. Plan for motion.
I move to approve the minutes from February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, for those of you who are present, we have, um, four items on the agenda. And the way this works, and first of all, is Mr. Atwood here? Or is it a man, woman?
Me.
Come up, you wanna come up and sit. So, for the rest of you here, just listen up. This is how this goes. So, you're the taxpayer, and you're having a problem with your assessor's evaluation. So, we're gonna hear from you first. Then we'll hear from the assessor. Then we're gonna meet on Thursday and make a decision. We actually make the valuation based upon what we hear. There's a presumption that the, um, assessor's, uh, assessment or valuation is correct. We can hear contrary evidence and not change our mind. The presumption is that their, their, uh, valuation is correct. You will get a letter of our decision, depending on how quickly it gets sent out. There used to be, if you mailed something by five o'clock one day and it was going to the, anywhere in Oklahoma, you'd get it the next day. That's out the window. So, you might would get it Saturday. At the latest, you'll get notice on Monday. Okay? All right. So, the first item is, uh, the Board of Equalization, item number eleven. We have Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry, Ms. Atwood present. Address, one six five one two Tonka Trail Edmund. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's residential. So, we're here from you.
Um, so I bought the house last year at two hundred and sixty-five thousand, ended last year, October seventh. Um, and it was appraised for two ninety-one, five hundred. Last year it was appraised for two hundred and fifty. They weren't able to tax that much, 'cause you can only buy three percent. So, it was two twenty-eight was the taxable market value. So, that's an increase of over sixty thousand dollars in one year. Um, I looked at all of the comparisons that they said my house was comparable to, and many of them were sold beginning of last year when market was-
Crazy.
-out of control. Um, but also, many of them were not comparable to my house in the inside. Many of them have hardwood floors, intricate woodworking on the inside. Um, yards are much bigger than mine. And, um, also, some are three-car garages. Mine is just a two-car garage. Um, I did find many comparables that sold for two six, uh, sorry, two hundred and sixty thousand or less in my block of Edmunds that looked similar to my build. Um, I sent those in the first time, but they said they didn't count as comparables for some reason.
Did you say that your sales price was, your purchase price was two hundred and sixty-five thousand?
Correct.
Okay. One thing I didn't say, so you guys back there, listen up. Um, we here are not concerned with your taxes. That's between you and Butch Freeman. We're only here concerned with valuation, okay? So, 'cause I, I heard you mention the taxes or the taxable rate, the taxable base. There's two different items here. There's the market race and there's, there's the taxable.
Yeah.
We don't deal with the taxes. And I understand most people are concerned with their valuation affecting their taxes. We don't deal with that. We only deal with valuation of the property. Okay. Okay, but I wanna make sure, so-
The market value last year was two fifty.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred, right?
Okay.
Um, and this year, they said it's two ninety-one.
Okay.
Five hundred. But I bought it for two sixty-five.
Now, did I understand you to say that when you were in, um, negotiations for purchase, there had been an appraisal done on the property and appraisal showed it at two ninety-one, five?
Mm-mm.
You bought, where, where did, uh, okay. That's just what the assessor says. Did, did you have an appraisal done prior to your, your purchase?
Um, you know, my mortgage was needed, and I don't remember what that was.
What was the asking price?
Two eighty.
Oh, you, you were able to get a house below? Okay.
These are market, I mean, garden homes, right? It's a, that's area of Fenwick that's-
Yeah.
Kinda on the, the south side.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Off of fifteenth, like, right off of-
Right.
Yeah.
No, I'm familiar with the area.
And fifteenth and?
Um, in between Penn and Western.
Okay.
On the north side of the road.
It's right in the middle of Penn and Western.
And what's the square footage of your house?
It's nineteen forty-five.
Okay. Okay. I hear from you, hear from the appraiser.
So, yeah, we do have it on for two ninety-one, five. That's what we sent down on the notice of decision. It was a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar, uh, valid purchase in October of twenty-two. Her home is nineteen years old, and the six comps that we pulled, all within her neighborhood, all twenty-two sales, are her nineteen point seventeen years of age. Um, and the comps that she provided, there was one that was a twenty-three sale we couldn't use. There's two that are outside the neighborhood, um, in Copper Creek that we could not use, um, 'cause all the comps that we provided are in her neighborhood.
In the Bedford Circle, not in my neighborhood.
We show it being in the neighborhood, 'cause we have no adjustments, uh, made for it.
Bedford Circle's up there, off of one ninety, one sixty-nine, to the left, in that circle, right over, right to the left of your mouse.
Right there?
Down, on that side, yeah.
Okay.
Is that another phase of the same addition?
That, I don't even-
You know how you have phase one, phase two?
Yeah, 'cause this left part is my phase. I don't think that, I don't know if that's Fenwick, the entirety over there.
It is. The, the dividing line is, if you go to the far left where you see the undeveloped property, at the top of that, you go straight across, and that's the, that's the boundary between Fenwick and Copper, I can't remember. The reason I know this, I used to be, I was with Edmunds Schools, and part of my area was transportation. And when we were doing, I saw this area develop over time, and we were, they wouldn't. We made them connect over there. So, it, it's barely within it, but it is within that neighborhood. That's, there's three hundred and twenty acres there. It's a whole.
I mean, that house is the house that has all the intricate woodwork inside of it that doesn't look anything like my house. And the yard of that house is three times the size of my yard.
Are you on a cul-de-sac?
No.
Would you think the, the others are comparable, if you throw that one out?
I mean, I think-
In your opinion?
Some of the others are comparable. The one on sixteen, seven, twelve, Farmington Way, that one is identical to what my house looks like. That sold for two hundred and forty, or two fifty.
What's, what was the square footage?
That one, that one sold for two fifty. It's nineteen fifty-eight. It's just thirteen square feet over mine. But the layout of that one and the inside of it looks almost identical.
Sale date of that one?
That one was April first of twenty-two.
And, uh, we make adjustments for everything to get it to be exactly or as close to being to the subject property. And we also have to take into effect that, you know, obviously, it'll sell for at a certain date, but then we also have to account for market trend at the end of the year. So, when you take all those adjustments and the market value as it trends, plus the adjustments, you know, we get comps that currently support the value of where we have it at right now.
Okay.
And that's why we've arrived to the, what we have it at as right now.
Okay. You have any more questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Anything?
I did have a question. Why, why were her comps disallowed? They just were, so, I know one of them was in the twenty-three year, which you-
Correct. And then there was two that were in Copper Creek that we could not use, because we actually had enough sales in, uh-
You had a sample size big enough in-
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, are those ones over, um, just north of one sixty-nine, not Fenwick? All those ones, 'cause I had comps in there too.
Yeah, we looked at every, uh, we looked at all the comps that you provided, and always, like I said, only one was, uh, Fenwick, or two may have been Fenwick. But the others were-
So, the answer to her question is they're not in Fenwick? That's what you were asking, right?
Right. I had some that were just right north of that one, sixty-ninth Street, and those, um, those roads there, like Plotman Lane and Bedford Drive, those ones. But those weren't put into my comps that I received.
Anything further from either of you? Ooh, nice pictures.
That's my house.
Right.
Now, where are you calling, let me see that. Why are you calling that a garden home? What is that?
Um, it's Fenwick Garden Village. It's, it's a, um, they just call them gardens, 'cause they're so close together, they have a very small backyard.
Okay.
Like, for this example, this one right here, we have, that one is Copper Creek on eighteen oh nine, one seventy-sixth. And this is also Copper Creek on Zink Drive.
That one was sold this year, but that sold last year also for two hundred and thirty thousand.
Right. And we had to go with the most recent sale that we think is, and that one says, uh, we got, that one being for twenty-three, so... And that's why we've arrived to the value that we did.
That house sold tw- twice in twelve months? Okay. Okay. We're gonna close the hearing on, uh, BOE number eleven, and you'll hear from us either, Friday, Saturday, or Monday. Uh, thank you for coming in. Okay.
All right. Our chairman has stepped in, so we will go ahead and make a note of that, and then, um-
The person here with, is it Pfeffall Trust?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is BOE number nine. What's your name?
Kenneth D. Fow.
Say it again.
Kenneth D. Fow.
D. Fow, okay. All right. Put a D there. And this house is at one 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 six Aberly Circle in Arcadia?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so tell me about your, your, is this a house and land?
Yeah. It's, it's a house on two acres.
Two acres.
Yes, ma'am.
And square footage of the house?
Forty-two, forty-eight.
Forty-two, forty, okay, go ahead.
So, the house, um, in twenty twenty-one, on the market value was seven twenty-five, seven twenty-five thousand. Then in twenty twenty-two, went up another hundred thousand to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then for twenty twenty-three, it's gone up to nine hundred and sixty thousand. Um, there's been two homes that have been sold in subdivision. There's thirty-two homes in this subdivision. Um, basically, one was in July. Um, it's comparable to my house, uh, kinda just in the living area, but it has elaborate pool and gardens and everything. I haven't done any upgrades to my house at all.
Why not?
What, what is, uh, your subdivision called?
Uh, Bopre.
Bopre, okay. Oh, I, I know exactly where this is.
It's just across from that water plant there.
My, my son lives in, uh, Chilwell Farms.
Okay, yeah, just on the street. So, um, the other house sold in, in August of this year, um, forty-one, hundred and fifteen square feet versus mine, four two forty-eight. Um, it sold for nine hundred and, and twenty thousand, just like two hundred and twenty-three dollars a square foot. Um, our house, if you did that, would come out to be about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, versus the nine sixty. Um, but, um, I just, I just think that things are rising too, too fast, um, you know, and even when I kinda go to the sheet here for the accounting-
Yes.
-talks about how many houses, you know, or a million, to me, it's kinda like a race, maybe, how many, how many homes can you make out of a million dollars? But beyond that, um, what I wanted to show was, you know, these are, even though I have the house, these are like the streets that we have in my neighborhood, you know? Builders don't put any type of rebar or anything down. So, I mean, yes, they have the house, but then you have, you know, what's occurring to the streets in front of your house, which drives down, you know, drives down the value. And then you can see up there, see the water plant that's up there, up to the left where all the red dirt is?
Yes.
So, they just initiated a hundred and ninety-one million dollar, um, uh, construction for new water plants and, um, did some things to the lake. And so, basically, that whole area is just, it's just red dirt now. And so, consequently, my house, my windows, everything is just covered constantly from that expansion and all this, all this red dirt. So, I mean, it's great to just put the value on what everybody thinks the house is, but where it's sitting and what it's exposed to is, to me, it's driving down the value. I mean-
Okay, the water plant for Lake Arcadia to supply water to Edmunds?
Yes, ma'am. Drinking water. So, it's a hundred and ninety-one million dollar project that's going-
I would just tell you that I was involved in the land contaminations that created that lake, so I'm kinda familiar with the water issue.
Yeah, it's a beautiful area, and they're talking about tree conservation, but they've gone in and just ravaged, ravaged the area with, from the trees.
Am I correct that-
Does that go to provide water to your property?
No, sir.
Oh, good.
You're on a well.
On a water well, yeah.
Your sale was in, uh, November of two thousand sixteen, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
The purchase, I should say. And you purchased it for seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, what you bought was a built house on two acres, or did you, is this a custom build for you?
It was, it was already built.
It was already-
Just came into the neighborhood, and it was for sale.
Okay, and, um, and I'm correct, two thousand sixteen?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you've been there six years?
Yes, ma'am.
And at this moment, you're asking that the valuation be seven hundred and eighty-thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars?
No, that was the, the tax, the tax value.
Well, okay, what, what, what are you asking us to set the value at?
Nine hundred? Nine hundred thousand.
And the assessor is at nine sixty-five hundred, so we're, we're talking about sixty thousand, five hundred dollars? Okay. And those pictures that you just showed us, did you show those to, to, to the assessor during your informal?
We sent the package.
You sent the package?
Yes, ma'am.
This one, now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so one of these days, you're gonna build a pool and all that other stuff?
I'm sorry, say again?
One of these days, you're gonna build a pool and big fence and all that other stuff?
There's only two of us, so, um, probably not gonna put a pool in.
Oh, okay.
So, kinda like just the green, the green grass.
Okay. Mike?
So, yeah, they're, bought the property back in sixteen for, um, seven, or, excuse me, seven fifty-nine. We currently have it on for nine sixty-five hundred. Uh, we did receive the, uh, images of the street conditions. And I spoke with a realtor that has done some work in this addition before and said that the city does not maintain the streets. The streets are the responsible of the homeowners. So, they are in charge of keeping up with the maintenance and, and all that. Um, and we, we pulled up, we pulled up four comparables, uh, that sold all, or some, one in, couple in twenty-one and a couple in twenty-two, and we currently, uh, support a value of nine hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. The median is just slightly above that, but that's why we didn't budge on, uh, lowering the value any.
The median is just slightly above nine sixty?
Yeah, we have nine six, or, the current, what we have it on is nine sixty-five hundred. The median is nine sixty-six fifty-two. And the average age of the four comps that we did is seven point seven five years old. And the subject is seven years old. And that's why we were not able to lower the value any at all.
Okay, tell me one more time what the twenty-two valuation was.
Yes, let me, uh, pull that up for you.
He said, but I didn't write it down.
Uh, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And like I said, we also have to, like I said, we have to factor in the time-adjusted sales price as of January first this year, which market trend is boosting those values up.
So, um, Mr. DeFaul, if I offered you nine hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars for your house, would you take it?
Yeah, if it was for sale.
Do you have any questions?
What's the gap between the, uh, market value and the taxable value?
The only thing I would say that, uh, empathize with the streets. All the streets in my neighborhood are all broken up.
Is it taxable, is that hundred?
Brand new neighborhood.
Yeah, that's the current tax.
Current tax, okay.
Luckily, they dedicated it to the city, so we got out of that. But you guys are stuck fixing these streets. Uh, and that's a, that's a consideration. A- a- am I right? You guys are responsible for these streets?
Yes, sir. So, you know, if you sell your house and then people go through the homeowner's deeds and everything and see that they're responsible for the streets, they could determine whether somebody wants to buy the house or not.
Yeah. I understand. Okay. That's all I got.
You're good? Okay, anything further?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so you heard me tell the other lady that we'll be making a decision on Thursday, so Saturday, hopefully, you'll get a letter from us.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate y'all's time.
Here you go. Sure. Okay, is it Mr. Middleton? Oh, we're gonna close the, sorry, gonna close the hearing on BOE, uh, number nine. Now, we're open the hearing on BOE, BOE number fourteen. So, do you live at one seven five, one seven? Is it Egress Landing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, we'll hear from you.
All right. Um, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. Um, the assessor's value for this property, my, my property here, was set at eight eighty-five, five hundred, and I think the closer value would be seven eighty-two, seven hundred, based on comparable sales and a, the appraisal at when it was sold. The appraisal that was done in July twenty-two was at seven fifty-seven, and, and then the comparable sales came in at the seven eighty number.
And what was the appraisal done for?
Um, when I bought the property.
Oh, okay. And that was what year?
July twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
What's the square footage of your house?
What was that?
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-four square feet.
Oh.
And I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch your purchase price.
The purchase price was six hundred thousand, but it was a non-arm-singular transaction.
What do you say?
Is this family inherited property?
Yeah.
And how many sales, you, you have recent sales in your neighborhood?
I do. Um, and after the informal hearing, the assessor came back with six properties, um, and so I used the same process, uh, for twenty-two properties with similar, uh, square footage, and came up with a median of that seven eighty number.
Seven eighty-two, seven?
And those are all properties between three thousand and four thousand square feet that were sold in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, so, yeah, uh, everything he said so far is correct. Seven hundred, or the invalid arm-singular transaction purchase of six hundred thousand in June of twenty-two, we currently have the value on it, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, request, he's requesting a value of six hundred and fifty thousand. And we, the comps that we provided-
Mike, can we ask you a question? He said his ask was seven eighty-two, seven.
Yeah, I revised the number after the informal hearing, after-
Oh, okay, so-
Gotcha. Yeah, that threw me for a loop. I thought, wait a minute, what numbers I got?
All right.
You said how much, what you're requesting?
Seven eighty-two, seven.
So, yeah, we, we looked at the comps that he provided.
Before you get going, he's, he's changed his asking to seven eighty-two, seven hundred. Are you willing to accept that as value?
You're not, no. Um, so we ran some comps, and we're using, you know, twenty twenty-two sales, and the adjustments on those are far less, you know, substantial opposed to, as opposed to what he's provided. And, and his comps do support a lower value, but the problem is, we're having to make significant adjustments compared to the adjustments that we're having to make on the comps that we provided. Um, I mean, we're, there's one, there's one adjustment that he provided that has over two hundred grand worth of, uh, adjustments that have to be made. And we just compared the two, and it shows that we have better comparables with less value and adjustments to support the current value.
Where is this, tell me, give me some boundaries for this one?
Rose Creek. It's the north side of Rose Creek, in the Deer Creek area.
Okay.
Yep, right here. Portlander one seventy-eighth.
Okay. Is that a cul-de-sac? No. Okay.
Mike, tell me what you mean by adjustments.
So, any kind, like, for example, the properties that we use are not exactly three thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet, so any time there's less adj, or, uh, less square footage or more square footage, we'll make negative or positive adjustments, and that's for like-
Okay.
-your square footage, you know, quality, but the quality's the same in this, but like, effective age, or the, you know, the age, 'cause we have some that are fourteen years old and seventeen years old, we'll make certain percentage and value adjustments for those. Uh, fireplaces, you know, garage, um, you know, if one has a pool, one backs up to a lake, we'll make all the necessary adjustments. And then you factor in the market trend, combine those together, and that's where we come up with an adjusted sale value.
And this property is a lakeside property?
Correct. So, here's the water feature, and here's the house right here. So here's the water feature and here's the house right here. I'd also want to point out that the, or no, sorry, no, that was it, my apologies. Oh, yeah, the average age of the six comps that we, that we used come out to be thirteen years old. And his is fifteen years old.
What was the valuation in twenty, January twenty-two?
I have seven hundred seventy thousand five hundred.
What was that?
Seven hundred seventy thousand five hundred.
And this will be a reset on sort of, on the taxable because of the transaction?
Correct, and if you want to take a look at that in detail, yes.
I didn't hear what you said, Brett.
Oh, I said this will be a reset on the, I know we don't look at the taxable, but that gives me an idea kind of where it's going.
Right.
Where it was and then where it's going on.
Now, is your issue really valuation or is your issue, you worded about your taxes?
Just valuation, trying to make it as fair as possible and get the most accurate.
Sure.
Price for what the property is.
Because you heard me say we don't deal with this, okay.
Yeah, we don't deal with the taxable value, we simply go with market value.
Yes, sir.
Arms links transaction would be fair. And you've already admitted the purchase you made was to a family inheritance thing, so it's not a.
Yeah, not, not part of this.
Not an arms-linked transaction.
Mm-hmm.
Did you got more quick?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to point out that, yeah, I did the twenty-two comparable sales and, yes, some of them are not, has bigger adjustments. But I would also point out that two of the adjustments that the assessor used were over a hundred thousand as well. And there were multiple properties that were also close that they did not use. For instance, this one here was only thirty-six thousand adjusted and had a price per square foot of two hundred and thirteen.
Which, which one are you referring to?
Do you, did you guys get?
We have, we have your package.
It would be number eighteen here. That one was two thirteen, and the assessor has it at two fifty a square foot. And there's other properties as well. And with the appraisal done in July, also had that at seven fifty-seven. And this was done by third party, so.
So was the appraisal done, it wasn't done for purposes of the sale, right?
It was just to conduct a fair market value for it.
Is bank required?
Yep.
Cuts along?
Yep.
I have no further questions.
Not for me.
Hey, so you'll be hearing from us Saturday or Monday at the latest, probably.
Thank you.
So we're gonna close the hearing on BOE number fourteen. Proceed to BOE number eighteen, Mr. Sterling?
Yes.
Is your property at one five nine oh one Hardwick?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So you've had the advantage of seeing the other three hearings, so you know what's about to happen, so let me hear from you.
Well, I purchased this house in June of this year.
Last year.
Last year. And it was at the extremely high end of the market when I purchased it. I had been searching for a home for over a year, maybe about, seen four offers on homes, lost them all. My wife was getting to the point of total discussion and telling this house that, we said, this house will do. And we offered thirty thousand dollars over the asking price.
What was the purchase price?
Two sixty.
What?
Two sixty.
Well, why do I have two ninety-five hundred?
That's what I bought it for.
Oh, it was asking price was two sixty?
Asking price, two sixty. It was in a bidding war, and if you wanted the house and you needed a house.
And so the purchase price was what?
Two ninety-five hundred.
Oh, okay.
Tell me the square footage of the house. Square footage?
Twenty, two thousand thirty-four, I believe.
Okay.
After purchasing the house, I found that I had to closing. I found out the things that I didn't really like very well, but I went ahead and closed anyway. Property basically has, I wanted to put a shed on it. I find out that it's got an easement, ten-foot, caused the whole west side. It has a garage, it's a three-car garage, small bay, has not accessible with a car. It has a rock wall in front of it. The property is squeezed in such that the rock wall basically, you can't take the rock wall down, we don't know the rock wall, it's gone by years away. And so I showed the, ran some pictures of the basic things about the house that really appreciated value. So we paid well over the market value. And I don't think that I should be penalized for being stupid.
There was a lot of that going on last year.
Yeah, yes, it was really tough. It was crazy. Andy Chowsky bid on me, bid well over the asking price and lost them all.
So give me some mile section closest to.
All the comparables that were in.
Can you pull up that map?
The accessory used was out of the area.
Out of the area or out of the addition?
Out of the addition.
Okay.
And the only sale I could find in the addition was sixteen oh oh nine Heather Court, which is about three doors away. It has a market value, two fifty-eight five hundred for this year. And I, and.
Where'd you get that figure? Zillow or something?
No, no, no. The assessor's office.
Oh.
This house is comparable, it has same square footage, same acreage. Got a little better location, it's not trapped. And it's got a value of two fifty-eight.
And it's just two.
And I'm at three oh, and I'm at three oh one. So I'm thinking that my property should be valued somewhere around two sixty.
But, okay, the paperwork that you filled out, I have two hundred and eighty thousand, is that wrong? You changing your mind today?
About two hundred and sixty, no? Two hundred and eighty? Yes, I think you're right, you're right.
Two eighty?
Two eighty is what I'm asking for.
So you, you want us to value your property at less than you bought it?
That is correct.
Six months.
Six months later.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, because you know, we're looking at valuation as of January one. Okay, which would be basically six months after you bought it, okay? And you're doing that because you're telling us what the bidding war atmosphere was like last year.
Yes, and I have no alternative, so. And the, I, I also ran some pictures of some of the defects that I found in the property. So if I wanted to sell it at this point, it'd be annoying, I would not get that kind of money for it.
Because of the defects or because of the market or both?
Both.
Okay. Okay, we'll hear from Mike.
So, yeah, purchased it for two ninety thousand five hundred in June of twenty-two. We currently have a median value of three twelve five hundred six. And the average age of the five comparables we used is twenty-one point eight zero years old. His age is, his current is twenty-one. We didn't get any of these pictures during the informal, so these were provided afterwards. He said he was forced to, he was forced to pay over thirty grand over what he was asking for. And honestly, you know, he sets the market value for what he pays for it, and he was adamant and not agreeing with that. And that's kind of where we're at, the comps that we've used are, you know, relatively nearby and they're all good, they're all good sales.
Can you show us that page so we?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be in black and white, but all the.
That's okay.
Now, Mr. Sterling, you understand that if you did not present evidence at the informal hearing, you can't present it here unless the assessor agrees that we can consider.
I understand.
Okay.
So here's the subject property right here. And then we've got a, number four, number two, and number three are all in his neighborhood. And we've got one over here. And we currently support the value of where he's at right now. And he's currently, yep, so that's where we're at right now. He's at three oh one five, and he's actually under what the, we have the median at. Now, the, the average price for all the properties is three hundred one thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. So he's right there with where we've currently gotten that.
You're, you're, you're saying three oh one five hundred?
That is current, his current value, yes, right now.
Okay.
Yep.
He wasn't correct when he said you didn't, you didn't use any comps in his area?
We did use comps in his area.
Okay.
Yeah, here's number four, number two, and number three. And here's the subject property right here, all within the neighborhood.
But not in Jeff Field Glen?
Well, we use one on the outside, that's what our sales analysis team used. And we still support, currently support the value of where he's at right now. Because we're also, like I said, taking into account the adjustments plus the market trend. It's currently where we're, where we sit at. And I also want to mention, may I mention one more thing?
Sure.
He, I mentioned to him about the exemptions that were possible to get. He said that he didn't care to have either the homestead or the senior frees based on where we have his current value at right now. And I mentioned those as a definitely helpful factor as time went on.
With the tax.
Right.
Are you concerned about the value or the taxes?
Value.
Okay. Because that's all, we're, we're limited to the value as well, okay.
Please tell me if I'm wrong, but the homestead exemption and the senior frees, regardless of what we do, those aren't affected.
Doesn't affect the value.
So I would say I would get those on regardless of what happens, sir.
Yeah, if you can qualify for the senior free, you want to do it.
How do you, how do you justify the valuation of sixteen oh oh nine Heather Court?
Is that one of his comps? You're asking him to justify his valuation of that comp or his use of it as a comp?
My use of it.
I mean, that's one of the comps that we pulled to help support the value. Now, we have, if that's just, we have to.
That's the only comp that, that he has in my development.
I mean, are you saying that you, in arriving at a value, you are limited to a neighborhood for comps?
Certainly.
So looking at this map, you're, you're suggesting that two, four, and three aren't in your neighborhood?
That is correct. They're not in the development.
Okay, now wait a minute, what, what is no house sold in, in the development? Are you saying there's no way to find comps?
There's one comp.
No, 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 listen to my question. There are no sales in your development hypothetically. Are you saying to arrive at value, no one can find a comp for that? Because it's nothing sold in the neighborhood?
There's, there's things that have been sold in the neighborhood.
You're not, you're not following me. Your argument is that his comps are not valid.
My argument is this house in my development.
Yes.
Is listed at fair market value of two fifty-eight.
Yes.
He has paid at three hundred. How's he justify this?
Well, Mike, he's asking you.
No, I am. We could tell, we could eliminate all the other comps if we wanted to and use that comp. But we can also find properties nearby that also are just like yours. They might be in a different neighborhood, but we can find them in very similar quality, age, make very minimal adjustments, and we can support that value.
I understand, because I, I was, his argument is if it's not in your neighborhood, it can't be a comp. And I'm saying, what if there were no sales ever, how would you ever find a comp? He's not addressing that, I understand. His ar, his argument is he's found a house and he thinks you're stuck with valuing his house like, like the assessor's has valued that particular house. I, I understand that's his ar, that isn't what I was asking him, but that's okay. It's, it's okay. Okay, is there anything further anybody wants to offer or ask?
So you have no answer for this?
I'm, I'm, why are you stuck on that? I'm, I'm trying to understand.
That's the closest to the value of my house.
Okay. And, and, but, but further beyond that, you're saying he can't use anything else?
He could use something else.
Okay, that's all, okay.
In fact, you're using multiple other properties to get an average or a mean?
Correct, and the thing is, these are not too far away. Yeah, they're in separate neighborhoods, but the qual, the qualities and the adjustments are very minimal. So, yeah, they're in a separate neighborhood, but we can still use these to support a value. Now, if that was the only sale within the last few years, we try not to go back as far as four years and three years is even a stretch. But if we can find plenty of sales going back to twenty-two and maybe even twenty-one that are just like his, then we can use those. And if that was the only one within the last few years, he might have a case. But in this case, we got several properties that currently support where he's at right now.
And some are higher than his and some are lower than his.
Right. So that's why we have to combine everything together, market trend, everything, and come up with the median and a mean. And we currently have him where he needs to be at.
And you're at three oh one five hundred?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you understand? Do you understand what he was saying?
Yes, but then I don't necessarily agree with him.
I got you, yeah. You don't have to agree with him, just, as long as you understand what he's saying.
I think my asking value of two eighty is within reason.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing on BOE number eighteen. And Mr. Sterling, you'll be getting a letter from us where we set the valuation.
Okay, thank you, Kenny.
Thank you. And again, I would encourage you to go for those exemptions.
Why, I will. Thank you, Kenny.
You're welcome. Any other public comments on, alright, so we've closed BOE number eighteen now. We're set for tomorrow and Thursday.
That is correct, so yes, I sent out an email this morning. Our decision date will be Thursday instead of Friday, if nobody received that yet. Next week, we will have for sure the twentieth, most likely the twenty-second. I've gotta call some people to set some dates today. We'll probably have twentieth and twenty-second, that'll be Monday and Wednesday, and then we'll have that decision date Friday the twenty-fourth.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll try to be able to talk.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Collins, your wife still doing, still doing better? She's doing, she's doing a lot better, but.
It's alright.
Quite a bit of pain.
Yes.